It is Tuesday, October 18th, and the time is 5:30 PM. I'd like to call this work session to order. First on our agenda actually is not city updates, per usual. It's the Latino Chamber of Commerce. So can I please have Mr. Comerford to the podium, please? And Ms. Samora for the record. And whenever you both are ready. There you go.
Good evening. As most may know, I'm Noah Comerford, the president and CEO. I'm joined here by our, with our vice chair, Tracy Samora, and several of our board members that I'd like to ask to please stand and introduce themselves. Thank you all. So we call that the Chambers Chamber. We're usually super supportive of one another and really just moving forward. How can I get the slideshow to?
Don't do you have the thing, the clicker in front of you?
Yes.
And then we have help on the way.
Okay, all right. So who we are, the Latino Chamber of Commerce. We were founded in 1979. We have over 550 members. We have a member in nearly every industry, ranging from nonprofits, hotels, restaurants, schools, and utility companies. So we're, we, we are usually extremely diverse and we usually pride ourselves on having universal benefits. So of course, we don't turn anyone away. You do not have to be Latino or Hispanic to be a member. We have a wide variety of benefits and services to the businesses here in Pueblo, ranging from marketing, graphic design, advocacy, and free educational seminars. And the partnerships we have throughout the state range really from all skillsets, from schools up in Denver, the state fair here in Pueblo, and we're hoping to expand those partnerships so that we could leverage our services. And the reason we are here tonight is to ask for $100,000, which will allow us to get more involved with tourism and hospitality. So for that request funding, we will like, we would like to focus on four areas, which include collaboration, commerce, culture, and education. So up first is the collaboration. So for us to make this funding worthwhile and for us to continue not only fulfilling our mission, but fulfilling Pueblo's mission as a whole, we have to be able to market Pueblo and be basically salespeople for Pueblo and the community at airports, hotels, and tourist attractions throughout the state. And one way we could do that locally, on a local level, is to work with the Colorado State Fair and the Pueblo Riverwalk so that we could get more continuous use. So time and time again, we hear that both sites are not used enough, which in a sense I agree with. We have some of the best weather in the state. Both the Riverwalk and the state fair could be used throughout the year in a variety of different ways. So that's where we'd be able to help fulfill that with seminars, conferences, more touristic attractions that bring a lot more people into Pueblo. And then a third on the list is that we would like to collect data on the number of visitors and dollars spent per event in time period, which would allow all of us in the room and all our partners to budget more effectively, plan future events, and then really see what's working and what isn't working. And then lastly, as we survey all the stakeholders involved, we'd be able to gauge the, gauge the community to see what, what they would like to attend, what they would like to attend and spend their money on, which is, which is a win-win for all of us. The second focus area is commerce, which is obviously who we primarily are. The first item on the list we would do with the funding is hire a tourism coordinator. And that job description is attached in your guys' folder. We completed that over the last couple of weeks. Up next, we would like to create tourism and visitor bundles. So this would allow tourists to stay, eat, and entertain simultaneously. So if you're a tourist coming into Pueblo and you stay at a downtown hotel, your lodging would not only be covered in the bundle, but that would also encourage you to go eat at a local restaurant, and go have a drink at Walter's, or maybe go visit a museum all in the same night. And then the, the biggest and the, the event that I'm most pride, prideful of for 2023 is that we'd like to organize an annual food truck festival. Couple other organizations do those throughout the state. It's extremely successful. And the flyer for that is the last paper in your guys' folders. So that would basically be our new annual event that we would take a lot of pride in. We recruit food trucks all throughout the state, encourage them to stay the weekend here in Pueblo and spend their dollars here in our community. And fourth on the list is that we would do a better job of promoting local attractions, including museums, our bike trails in the Pueblo reservoir. And by doing that, we'd be able to create more, more promotional days, whether that be Tourism Thursdays or Museum Mondays, to basically just encourage attendance throughout the week at those attractions, rather than just on the weekend during the state fair or maybe the chili festival. So promoting those sites more year round. And then we'd also like to enhance the Supporting Pueblo Online Marketplace, which is also one of our membership benefits. So we would be able to sell any product made or sold here in Pueblo, and anyone throughout the state would be able to purchase that and get delivery on that. And lastly, this would be more of a two to three-year project, but we would partner with local organizations like the Arts Center, the Arts Alliance to develop an annual multicultural art and music festival, because Pueblo has a really rich history of art and music. And at the end of the day, artists are local business owners that really don't get to support the desperately need. So the third focus area we'd like to devote funding and attention to is culture. And we, we do this by highlighting the many cultures in Pueblo. As we all know, Pueblo and Southern Colorado as a whole is really a melting pot for diversity. We have a lot of rich history here, a lot of cultural aspects that really don't get the attention. So if we bring more of those cultures to the table when it comes to events and education, we'd be able to serve Pueblo better that way, opposed to just a couple of cultures. And then we'd also include Spanish translations for all marketing material, since Spanish is the second most popular language spoke in Pueblo. And thirdly, we'd also like to divert our after-hour mixers into more of a speaker series event so that we're focusing on education, history, and really highlighting Pueblo in all aspects. And if I could add to that as well, Pueblo, the majority of the population is Hispanic. Both school districts, CSU Pueblo and PCC are all Hispanic-serving institutions. We have to use those as our benefit by making Pueblo our events and our services all inclusive so that everybody has an equal voice, everybody's dollar is spent evenly, and we're just making a better Pueblo for all of us. And then lastly, the last focus area is education, which our board and myself speak very highly of. So the very first item in terms of education we'd like to focus on is developing a hospitality and tourism certificate program. Neither PCC or CSU Pueblo currently have a program like that in place, which I think is really astonishing, because we have a lot of tourism here. We have the state fair, we have the Riverwalk. If we're encouraging students to be prideful of that and learn in that, we could have more come here than we ever thought possible. And by focusing on education, we would also like to employ at least two intern students, one from CSU Pueblo and PCC, so we're spreading out the work evenly. We would also, and we're actually in the process of implementing a business resource center in the back of our office, which will include a photo box, a green screen, so members or any business owner could film marketing videos, TikToks, things like that. And we'd also like to create a hospitality seminar series, which ties to Bullet One, the certificate program. If we have, if we're educating more people on the ins and outs of tourism, it's really a no-brainer for all of us. And that's also a way we could keep local talent working in Pueblo. And then lastly, we would be able to work with Petco and other members of the community to educate potential businesses on the pros and cons, or there shouldn't be any cons, but all pros of doing business in Pueblo. And here is a funds allocation of the 100,000. Obviously, the first section covers payroll. So it would be a livable wage of $21 an hour for the tourism coordinator, which is above the average for Pueblo. We also have accounted for payroll taxes. And then because we think very highly of taking care of employees and billing continuity, we would offer health, dental, vision, and a retirement plan to obviously encourage that person to stay in that role. And then the two events we would like to eventually develop over the next year to two years is the annual food truck festival and then the annual cultural art and music festival. And if that's a collaborative event, I don't think we'd be on the hook for the full 11,000. We'd be able to split the expenses and revenues multiple different ways. And then finally, marketing. So we would like to do more marketing to enhance our local online marketplace so that everybody in the state could buy Pueblo chili or a gift card to see bills. And then the $10,000 at the very bottom would go towards promotional bundles so that people could, like I said before, stay, eat, and entertain simultaneously without having to buy multiple vouchers, enroll in several emails. That would really be the one-stop shop for all Pueblo marketing. And that's all I got. Thank you all for the time, and it's, it's a pleasure to be here in front of you all.
Thank you, Mr. Comerford, for that presentation. I want to remind my fellow counselors that the Latino Chamber is here because as we were going through the budget several weeks ago, our council's budget committee had actually recommended that the Latino Chamber get significantly more than requested. So that's why the Latino Chamber is here today. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Graham?
I just wanted to say that I like your tourism and visitor bundle packages. I don't know if the regular chamber does that right now, but when I had my restaurant on the Riverwalk, people would come from out of town and they, they didn't, they were staying at the Marriott or, you know, and they didn't, they weren't sure where to go eat or, you know, what Pueblo had to offer. So that'd be cool if you could get those bundles in the hotels so that people would know all the great places to eat and great places to shop, especially in downtown Pueblo.
Yeah, we have to make it easier for tourists to spend their money here. I don't think our lodging has an issue with filling the rooms. The problem we have is those tourists are not going out and visiting the Riverwalk, visiting the reservoir. So if we can encourage more of that and make it easier to spend their dollars without having to visit so many websites, so many offices, just have it right in front of them, it's a no-brainer for them to spend more money here. And instead of spending one night, maybe they spend a whole weekend here.
Counselor Tencio?
Yeah, I'm glad to see how you're going to spend the money. I think it's comprehensive. I think it's a good idea. Somebody asked me just recently, you want to give them, them more money? We know what you give to the Greater Chamber, and we know what you're getting for that money. This is good that you're outlining exactly what the money is going to be spent for. And I think it's a good idea. The bundles are a great idea. When I worked with a couple of organizations, sports events, we had a program. In the program, we got sponsors, restaurant sponsors, and we put in the program, these are the restaurants that we would like you to support, since they're supporting us. And it worked, because somebody from out of town, and a lot of people were, would look at the program, say, well, where am I, where am I going to go eat? They wouldn't know. It was in their program. Go to this restaurant, go to that one. These are our sponsors. Help them out, help us out. And it worked really well. So the bundling thing goes far past that. So I really understand that. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the feedback. And we'd also want to be able to hold the city, the taxpayers, and our members responsible and accountable. I mean, we hold ourselves accountable. So we like to obviously show every single dollar that's coming in and out. There's nothing to ever hide. We want to also be able to develop future programming, future events, based off of the survey results we get, so we're not too stagnant. We're never afraid to evolve. So if there's something that we have to change, we would certainly look at that.
Well, on behalf of the Board of Directors, I'd like to compliment Noah and his staff, because they are a small staff, but we are very mighty, and he has our full support. And what, what I'm most excited about with this approach is it's a very localized approach. So as we know, with the Greater Pueblo Chamber and a lot of the funds that they receive, their job is to market Pueblo as a whole, as its entirety. But I love this approach, because it not, it not only markets it to the tourists through the hotels and those bundles, but also to our community, who sometimes folks forget how wonderful we are. So I think this approach will be a little bit diverse from what the Greater Pueblo Chamber offers, but Noah has our full support, and we appreciate your support as well, because we think this will really be something that'll catapult us even farther than we've already come. Counselor Flores?
This plan is amazing. I think it, it's very, very focused. And I'm interested in marketing our airport. And I know that was one of the first slides that you were showing. I've always said that we have a gem in our airport. I mean, there's not many cities that have, not only, they don't have nearly as many amenities as we have in Pueblo, because Pueblo was always supposed to be a big city, and it never, never got that far. But our airport, number one, the, the people that are deplaning, you know, you've got all those advertisements as you walk in as to where you should go eat, where you should stay, and all of that. And I like that idea a lot. And then I also feel like, as people come into our community, there has to be people that are, you know, developers, that, that potentially our airport should probably attract a, a large kind of warehouse operation, whether it's small packages or mail or whatever. We're ideal, because we can land any kind of plane on our, on our runways. So I think marketing, not only for tourists that are coming in, but also for economic development, is, is just, you know, fantastic that you're doing that. I don't think people know how, you know, what kind of reputation the Latino Chamber has, number one. We're probably the largest Hispanic chamber in the state of Colorado. And when we go to the national, you know, I've been to several national US chamber, we're usually a focal point because of the things that we do here. You know, the, the Epic Loan Program, which is still being operated by the neighbor works, that, that was founded by the Latino Chamber. Our Leadership Series, that was founded by the Chamber. You know, the, the foundation obviously is a spinoff, but you know, doing the tostada, doing, we just recently honored Jeff Valdez, who is on HBO now as a director and a producer. Those are the kind of things that, that really emanate, because people like you have these creative ideas. The only thing that I do worry about is that I think the, the amount is, is, and, and obviously you want to walk here before you run. But the real question is that you know advertisements, whether it's radio, television, whatever, they're very expensive. And you must have a plan for the people that you're representing of how that's going to go, you know? But, you know, we could look that into the future, because those kinds of advertising are very expensive. And my first thought was that this is, this might be light, but I think it's light on purpose, because you want to get your feet wet and, and see what the, you're, you're going to also have the ability to kind of garner a lot of information where the needs are. So this time next year, you'll be able to come back and, and tell us, you know, your successes and, and then hold yourself, I like the fact that you guys hold yourselves accountable, you know, and you'll give us a report next year at this time with your successes and all the other thing. But I like your idea a lot.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for the feedback. And I also want to add a little bit of, of points to the airport. So we, we would eventually start to market at DIA and at the Colorado Springs Airport, because that's where most of the tourists are flying into. Our airport doesn't have the traffic that it could have, but I know dollars are, are on the way. And if you look at a map, Pueblo is almost the center of the US, which is a really good geographic advantage that we could take advantage of right now. And then the four focus areas we, the four focus areas we identified are the areas that have a lot of gaps. So we wouldn't be stepping on anyone else's toes. If anything, we'd be able to complement what other organizations are already doing. And, and from that, build more partnerships that are, are sustainable, because when you have more voices at the table, dollars typically go further, ideas go further, and success happens longer.
Other questions or comments for the Latino Chamber? Seeing none, thank you so much, Mr. Comerford and Ms. Samora, Ms. Samora, for that presentation. The staff need direction to move forward? I think the question on the table is supporting the Latino Chamber of Commerce's $100,000 increase in the budget. Councilman Martinez Ortega?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Tencio?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Counselor Mastry?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Excellent. We'll be in the budget at that amount. Thank you, Latino Chamber. Moving right along then is the meat and potatoes of the meeting, which is all around this special budget work session. So Mayor, I see that you're online. Welcome. So Mayor Emma Slano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the council. This is, as you know, the second budget work session. We've got a presentation that Laurel will go through with respect to some of the changes in the budget that we thought you should be aware of. And then obviously, the purpose for these work sessions is to get input from council and answer any questions that council has with respect to the budget that, that we have proposed. We will add the $100,000 for the Latino Chamber to our proposed budget. And when you get the final budget, that additional $100,000 will be in there. But why don't we go ahead and put up the PowerPoint? And Laurel will talk to you about the PowerPoint that deals with new positions, positions that we're funding, things like that. As you know, in any city budget, the vast majority of expenses are for personnel. And that's no different in Pueblo. And there's a large increase in personnel expenses for the city in, proposed in 2023, not only because of the salary increases that we've given to our general service workers, our police and our fire employees and administrative staff, but because we're adding some new positions. And we've got a, a presentation that Laurel will go through.
Madam Chair, Council, and Mayor, the slide deck, I think, is up, and you also have printed copies in front of you. We're going to start with Counselor Flores's request to confirm the status of the economic dashboard. And we're, we're very glad that you asked that question yesterday. So Anna and I worked on what's before you to present today, and we're going to ask before we're finished for direction from council. And we start out with what you have in front of you on page one of the economic dashboard information, with the initial proposal that Counsel Flores presented, prepared by Dr. Kathy Autumn Bailey. And this $183,000 total, which included the development of the dashboard, the monthly dashboard update, the train and handoff of the dashboard at 8,000. And specifically, he asked about the outreach for build-out of the Pueblo workforce asset map of 30,000. And that's where it began the question last evening. In the 2022 budget, which council passed last fall, there was a $183,000 budget. Moving forward into 2022, by the time things settled into place, council actually approved a $145,000 contract. And the contract was approved to include the following two items only. To develop the dashboard at 90,000 and to pay a, a monthly dashboard update throughout the, the contract period of one year of, from April the 1st of 2022 to March the 31st of 2023. So the contract was approved and it is in place. And the next slide will show you currently how we've expended those funds to date. The initial budget was booked at 183,000. Dr. Bailey did submit an invoice for the development of the dashboard at 90,000. And she also has submitted the initial invoice for the first quarter, which would have covered April, May, and June, that the contract was in place, of 13,750. She has not yet submitted, and I know she was out of, out of town and out of the country, I think, for the past two or so weeks, the quarterly update for July, quarterly invoice for July, August, and September. We anticipate she will be submitting and we will be receiving $13,750 invoice, and the same for the last fourth quarter of this year, which will remain a balance of $51,750 in that initial 2022 budget. We have not yet to date included budget amounts in the 2023 budget, which we do need to do. The contract is in place for a year, but there is not a contract yet in place. So the action that we're asking for this evening, or direction from council, is to add to the 2023 budget for the remainder of the contract, January, February, and March of 2023, $13,750. And we will ask our city attorney for help to develop that, that contract into, no, just the budget. The contract is in place. We just need spending authority. We also need spending authority and a contract for the following items. If council's direction is to continue with the remaining nine months in 2023 at the same monthly amount of $4,583.33, we'll need another $41,250 for the remainder of 2023. We also need approval and in a contract, the $30,000 for the outreach for Pueblo workforce asset map, and also $8,000 for the train and handoff dashboard. In conversation with the mayor today, he asked that we, we gain council's discussion or listen to your direction if there's interest to move forward. And according to Anna, we can actually give direction to include those budgeted amounts out of the 413 Fund for 2023, which is the half-cent sales tax fund out of the general fund or another entity that you would like us to move forward with. But we are happy that you brought this to our attention, because it does need action at this point with respect to the economic dashboard for 2023. I can keep going forward, or shall I pause there for discussion and conversation?
I think there's a couple of things that we need to clarify. First one is that when I brought the idea of the economic dashboard, the previous council basically, and I don't know if it's memorialized in an ordinance or not, but the city, my, my intent from the very beginning was to have the city fund this for two years, not one. Obviously, in order to get the first year done, we needed to include it in the budget. So it may have been that simple, that all we did was just put the money in the budget to get the dashboard going. The, the other little twist here is that our contract is effective, I think, April 1st, I believe. So that we're out of cycle here. We're not going from January to December 31. And, but I, I want to, I want to put this in the budget, number one, for the monthly dashboard. And since we didn't use the handoff, nor did we use the workforce development for $30,000, I want to be able to move that money into the 23 budget as one step, and then include a Uh as one step and then include a fifty-five thousand for the dashboard. Um, for the remaining months in twenty-three, which would be April through December. Uh and and then I guess we'll have to do if I need this going forward, that we'll have to do that in twenty-four, obviously. Uh the the setting up of the dashboard was a one-time charge, which was uh, was it fifty-five? It's.
Ninety, I think.
It was ninety thousand, Counselor.
Uh go back, go back to the last uh. Okay, it was ninety. Uh tha- that that no longer is an expense, um because she's got the template, the algorithm, she's got everything in place. So basically, what we need to do is uh is hopefully. Uh move forward with eight thousand, thirty thousand, and then fifty-five for the dashboard. Um and include that amount in the twenty-three budget. Uh, in fact, we don't, we don't really need the whole fifty-five. We actually need, what is it, seven or eight months? From the end of April to the end of December.
Um, it's from the numbers that are presented, the fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty remaining in the budget. That fifty-one thousand seven fifty covers its sufficient.
Okay.
Amount. We just have to actually put it into the twenty twenty-three.
Because it's curated, uh and but we're gonna, we're gonna lack. Um, four months, is it? We're gonna lack four months.
The remainder of of two thousand and twenty-three um from April to December is forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Um, so the but the so that would be new amount. The fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty, as uh requested and approved by the previous council last year. Has a fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar balance remaining that does cover January and February and March of twenty twenty-two. And the thirty thousand and the eight thousand, those three. Well, fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty. The direction from council would be to put it in the twenty twenty-three budget. It is not currently there. So Anna would tell you when when the when the twenty twenty-two budget closes and we haven't utilized those resources. It will roll up at year end here in the next two months into fund balance. Um, we have to take action to put it into the twenty twenty-three budget.
When when you say action, you're not talking about a uh.
They're just direction to make to staff.
You just need.
A direction, a concurrent or consensus among you to do that. And then also, what source? If it's from the general fund, you'd like to pay those sources from um finance, and Anna will have to make that adjustment to the general fund. Uh be one in budget. If it's from the four thirteen fund, she will have to make adjustments to uh the economic development budget.
I would prefer to use the same process we did in the twenty twenty-two budget. Wherever that fund, I mean, wherever the initial money came out, I want it in the same place.
Um, and Anna is on Zoom today, and she will confirm that it did come out of the general fund.
Okay.
That is correct. It was general funded for twenty twenty-two.
And the reason I'd like to continue that is that when when I brought this idea forward uh with the last council. It was always with the idea that the city would fund it for two years. And uh, that was always uh, you know, but but it's two different things here, handling. Well, all we're doing here is handling how we're going to pay for the twenty twenty-three period. My goal was that it would be, it would be like jump-starting this process kind of uh. Uh because it I couldn't get it done the way I actually wanted it to do. And now it's so popular that uh it's, there's an outside chance that I might be able to get. Sponsors to take this over even in the year of January of twenty twenty-three. But I can't, I can't depend on it. So that's why I want that. And so if I can, right now, we're uh. We're working on an economic forum in November. And we have sent out just a save the date card, and I already have ninety RSVPs. That's how popular it is, and we haven't even sent the invitation out yet. Um, and we have uh, and I say we because there's a citizen named Abel Chavis that's been helping me. We have collected uh probably close to twelve thousand dollars for. Uh our economic forum because lots of costs involved. And uh so everybody is wanting to step up to the plate and help us. So we do have uh. Two companies right now that may want to be subscribers that would pick up because they the the local uh businesses in Pueblo are going to have to pick this cost up going forward. You know, I didn't want this to be an expense that the city would be burdened with forever. It was just a jumpstart it, get the dashboard out there. And uh the business community picking it up, and I'm hoping that's going to happen next year. And we've already got two businesses that have committed to it, but we still need to raise a lot more money to cover the uh the the costs. So uh.
So it with the concurrence of the council, uh counselor, I think it'd be our recommendation then that we include those funds in the twenty twenty-three budget. Take it out of the general fund and that we will also um try to line up. Uh Dr. Bailey's contract so it expires on the thirty-first of December and get it coordinated with our fiscal year. So that um as you say, hopefully there'll be others that step up, but that'll. Basically fulfill our two-year commitment for that, if that if that's acceptable to you.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We probably should have uh fashioned the current contract with the December thirty-one expiration. Um, I di- I didn't think about that.
Well, we just made it for twelve months, I think, from the time was entered into, and you know, these things take a while, but it shouldn't take. Very long now to just extend it out until the end of the year. And uh then we'll hopefully between now and the end of the year, we'll have a better feel for. Is it going to be picked up by private industry? Do we want to move it to the four thirteen fund? Uh if we're going to continue to fund it in the future, but you uh are aware and have indicated, obviously, that in other communities, it's the business community that. Really derives the benefit from this dashboard and comes in and supports it. We're hoping that will happen here, but. We all agreed that we jump-start it uh to get it going and make sure that people could um see how advantageous it is to have this information available. Um, in their regular business. So if that's the cons- uh consensus of the council, we'll proceed in that fashion.
Madam Chair, if Anna will confirm, I believe it's um um ninety-three thousand dollars to add to the twenty twenty-three budget in total. Is that right, Anna?
That's correct.
And that includes moving the money that we didn't use in twenty twenty-two. Okay. Obviously, I'm a yes.
Other questions or comments about this? So staff needs then direction. Um, well, so Counselor Flores has proposed to add the remainder of this twenty twenty into the twenty twenty-three budget and taken from the general fund. That's the question on the table. Counselor Martinez Ortega?
I'm indifferent, but yes. I'll be indifferent about the four to thirteen or general fund, but I'm a yes to move forward.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Tencio?
Yeah, I gotta admit that I'm pretty ignorant in terms of what the dashboard does and what it's going to do. Hopefully, it does what you say it's going to do. Uh I had questions, if you remember the the last time. In terms of what it's going to do. I I'm looking forward to that November. Yeah, thing. I'm I'm gonna tend to make it ninety-one. But uh, yeah, I'm a yes too, so.
Okay.
But uh I'm I'm looking forward to finding out exactly what it isn't, what it's supposed to do.
I'm a yes as well. Counselor Mastry?
I'm also yes. How are they tracking? How are they tracking the use of it, the the people that are using it? What's the tracking method for it?
Well, it comes out every month and it's on our website and. The information has really been pretty powerful. Uh one.
Now, how are they tracking how many people are using it? How how are you tracking?
There there is, there there is no way, I guess, of tracking how many people are using.
How many hits does it get? Don't you ever what we don't?
Well, it's it's uh, you know, the one thing I didn't want to do is hold it too close to the vest. We can probably get you the number for the city, but it's also. On the Latino Chamber uh website, the Pueblo West Chamber, it's on the the county's website, and it's also on the chamber website.
And that's like a link. So it still goes back to the same.
Yeah.
What the the same link. So how do they track how many hits are paying?
That's a good question.
I mean, because I mean, we would.
We just started it. We had the first one came out in April and uh obviously, you know, we're still kind of learning, but that's a very good question, and I'm gonna.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, anyone that's going to invest um money in it was going to want to know. How is it serving the community? How many people are paying attention to it?
Yeah.
What are they looking for?
It, when you take uh the bits and pieces of that dashboard.
Mm-hmm.
One of the most, I mean, some of the things that are being created as a result of that dashboard. Petco is now using it for all of their submissions of people that want to move to Pueblo, businesses that want to move to Pueblo.
Mm-hmm.
But one of the most interesting statistics was the fact that there's fifty-two hundred jobs available in Pueblo right now. And when you think of that number, it's not, it's it's kind of like, no, it isn't. It isn't true. It couldn't be true. Well, it's true.
Mm-hmm.
And we have around forty-five hundred people that are unemployed.
Mm-hmm.
So when you look, if you're the leader of PCC or CSU Pueblo. We're training people in the jobs that are, we're not training people in jobs that are available. And so your counselors in high school better start looking at that because we're. A lot of these jobs that kids are going into college for may not even exist in ten years.
Mm-hmm.
So so I both Timothy Mate, Dr. Mate and and uh Dr. Javick. Are have both agreed to use the dashboard to kind of use as a counseling tool. For people that are enrolling in both institutions because it's, it's pretty interesting.
Oh, I'm sure that the information on it is very worthwhile. And but we just wanted to make sure how we market it so that people use it.
Yeah.
You know, do we have a marketing, are we marketing it somehow? Otherwise, it's just innocent, the rest of us looking at it.
Well, eh, you know, anybody that uh gets on our website uh and uh but but your your question is right on the button, and I I will follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the direction of our staff there.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. Our little, our little clicker is very temperamental.
Maybe we should put that in the budget.
Uh Mayor Mayor, may I move forward with the personnel changes?
Yes.
Okay, we start in the personnel changes with um um three positions that Mayor's recommending um be restored funding for. So they were previously um um unfunded in twenty twenty-two. And uh the department directors and HR have made the the recommendation and and request of the mayor as he supported the refunding. Putting it back in the budget of the following three positions. In the police department, a code enforcement officer. In the police department, an office assistant, and in public works, a construction inspector. And those budgeted amounts are listed at the cost of the salary amount uh plus fully loaded benefits. And that's how we we include per personnel costs in the budget. So those are the three um currently uh refunded positions. And um the requests have come from department directors uh uh to the mayor. Um sixteen of the forty-nine, um he's um. Made recommendations and included in in the budget. And those individual um departments and positions, I'll run through the list um quickly, and then I think the mayor can start um with um. Any additional information for the um internal auditor. But out of the civil service department, uh marketing and recruitment specialist position. Out of the finance office, a senior tax auditor. Um, out of the fire department, the firefighter positions, and there are six of them. Um, and um the information technology, a media specialist, a media system specialist. In the legal department, uh an assistant attorney one, bringing in at entry level for attorneys. And the mayor's office, the internal auditor position. In the parks department, a program coordinator that will coordinate um sports activities, both youth and adults. In the police department, a payroll technician. And in the police department, another code enforcement. So one will be ref- um added funding to again, and this is a second new position. For the police department for the code enforcement officer. And in the police department budget, also the community service officers that you approve funding for for four of them um in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the chief has requested an additional two positions. So sixteen total new positions uh for a total of the cost and full benefits of one million four hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and seventy-two. And I'll stop there a minute, and um uh can we start with the mayor and some background information that you asked for last night about? Um what the internal auditor, um uh what the idea is uh for bringing on an internal auditor position?
Yeah, and we do not have a job description yet for this position. Um if it's included in the budget and council concurs. Uh, we would develop that dr- job description and obviously put it out and uh. Uh seek applicants for that that position. This is a position I think we've talked with council about, and council has talked with us about in the past, of somebody who would be responsible for. Auditing things on an internal basis and sort of keeping track of contracts and those kind of things. Um, as I envision this position, this would be somebody who would look over the. The uh employment agreements and the contracts we have with Petco. And check those, make sure those companies are complying with those contracts. We've had some of those fall through the cracks in the past. Um. This person would be responsible for some of the grant oversight compliance, not for doing the. Financial reporting for the grants that we have to do. We have individuals in finance who do that. But taking a look at the grants and making sure not only are the financial reporting being done. But that we're doing what we said we were going to do when we got that grant, so that we're not getting ourselves uh in trouble there. Um, part of this would be with respect to the CSAC money and those organizations uh making sure they've complied with. The requirements and have used that money for what they said they were going to do. And also help us in the finance department in terms of accounting policies and those kind of things. So it would be a a general thing if members of the council or members of the mayor's office have questions about. A program in a department, this internal auditor could go in and take a look at that and be satisfied that. Yes, what what we're being told um is in fact what's happening and that things are uh working above board. Not that we don't think that they're not at this point, but um we're reaching the point, especially with the number of grants that we're. Applying for and receiving where we have to keep pretty good track of that in terms of um making sure we're doing what we said we were going to do, and somebody dedicated to that. I think uh will uh serve us well in the future as as we move forward. So. Um, I'm happy to answer any other questions about that or have a conversation with council about that that position.
And Madam Chair and Council, there is on the next page, um before you ask questions of of department directors and if you have any of those positions. Um, there are also three new positions out of the enterprise funds. Um, the first from the airport, and that's the airport ops and maintenance worker. Um, and two from our wastewater department, the pre-treatment compliance technician. And out of wastewater, a maintenance supervisor, and those are the only three new positions uh from our enterprises and combined. Um, those are the updates with respect to personnel, um any internal auditor information, the economic dashboard. And um if you have questions, the directors are here or on um Zoom and um or any other, you know, budget page we can we can move toward.
Thank you, Mayor Emma Slano, for um answering all of our questions. What further questions or clarifications are there from council? Counselor Graham?
Not sure who this would actually be a question for, but this is probably a little bit for the newbies. When I was looking at um some of the personnel changes and the pay, um. And then the pay that our existing department heads get, is there somebody that could provide us with a little bit of background on? How that works and how their their pay is set? Is it by how many employees are under them? Is it how long they've worked for the city? Um. Just.
Ooh.
Both the mayor, HR director are here.
Okay.
Come come, but those two combined.
Yeah. I I, you know, because one of the things I was looking at is the the deputy of public works is. Starting off at one fourteen and some of the other um department heads I see are. Actual heads that make lists or sometimes just a little bit more. So I was just wondering how that scales out. Is it?
I don't know if the mayor wanted to speak on this, but um, you know, every year we look at. What our salaries are compared to equal or larger municipalities in the state of Colorado. That's who we compare to. And so when we look at that, we do have uh quite a number of positions that are. Undermarket significantly, especially in the department head ranks. And so the scales that are there have been there for a long time. Now those get adjusted annually when we have across-the-board increases. So the whole scale will move by. So the whole scale will move by a certain amount. As far as what actual pay is being paid, that's a decision that's made either, uh, you know, at the mayor's level, he decides each year, you know, what those department heads are going to get. So I think that, you know, the, the ranges themselves are based on a number of different factors to include, you know, what's the education level required? Are there certain certifications? What is the breadth and scope of the position? Um, it's, it's not so much a, a, a science where you can say, well, this one supervises forty people, so it should be paid this. You know, there's a lot of different factors that go into it, education, experience, certifications, degrees. All of those different things are considered when setting these ranges. But ultimately what department heads are paid is set by, uh, the mayor. So.
So I guess, Mayor, that would be a question for you is how do you, you set these? Is it just a variety of different, different ways or Ms. Solano?
Uh, you know, working with the mayor for the last four years and coming in to learn about the system. Um, I, I know from talking to finance and HR, at particular at that administrative level, there were years prior to, um, to, 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 to two thousand and nineteen where there were raises given to, um, to, um, general service, to police and to fire, but administrative didn't receive a raise. So in two thousand and nineteen, started to look at what is their baseline and then what could the budget hold? And so the mayor made, um, um, pay increase recommendations with city council approved to chunk into that, um, making it more, um, equal at the director level, given all of the things Marissa talked about. Also, the other thing he looks at is compression. As those raises that city council approves start hitting higher and higher, um, at the administrative level. Um, and those that are supervised, there is a compression level that we do have to come back and continue to raise a director level. All that combined, it is an individual by individual department head, um, a review um, of their, of where their salary started, where they are now, and what can the budget hold with attempting to use some equality all along the way. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, it is. And with respect to, um, you know, when we're trying to fill vacant positions, it's oftentimes a question of what do we have to pay to get somebody that we think can do the job that'll come to work for the city? So it's, you have to take into consideration what the market out there is paying. And if we want good qualified people to come in, we sort of have to bump it up a little bit. Um, and is that fair to existing directors? Eh, you know, maybe, maybe not so fair, but, you know, I've tried to be fair to the existing directors, um, and I have told you and I firmly believe that we should pay our employees as much as we possibly can because they're the ones that deliver the services to our citizens. And we want to attract high quality individuals to be employees for the city of Pueblo and we want to compensate them accordingly. It doesn't do anybody any good to try to get by as cheaply as possible. And I, I firmly believe that. Uh, we've given, uh, the, uh, directors, um, for the most part, uh, uh, seven percent across the board increase. And we've considered and gone through individually and some will get merit increases as well. So we, we, we try to be fair, um, and make sure they're making more than their employees are.
Okay.
And Madam President, the other large report that we'll be, um, expecting, and Marissa, I believe that's coming this following spring, is, um, the, uh, compensation study that is across the board that we did approve, that council did approve. Um, out of the, um, ARPA dollars from lost revenue. And it's, it's running fine. And I think you're expecting that still another maybe six months out?
Yeah, that, that would be beneficial because, you know, when I go person to person, um, it actually looks like women department heads are significantly paid less than men department heads. And so I was curious on how, how that was figured, if it was a by emp, by employee who works under them or exactly what that looked like. So that's what I was wondering. Thank you for the information.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Counselor Maestri and Counselor Flores?
I think we've asked, we've proposed that question in regards to salaries in comparison to the male and female salaries um, paid out by the city, if the female salaries were equal to the male salaries. And we, uh, and you said that you guys would look into it and get back to us. That's when we were discussing the contracts. The union contracts.
Counselor Maestri, um, Counselor Winter did ask one question about a certain individual. And when, uh, we talked about it internally at staff, Marissa and I, when we asked her, how do we move forward to find, you know, the, a one individual she was looking for, we did, we, there was no further information about, you know, which position she was, she was asking about.
I guess maybe you could just show us a comparison of, uh, a position where, uh, we have a female department head and what in comparison to what it was when the department head was male. I, I think that's a good start. And see if, if there's a difference. Thank you.
Well, there probably will be differences because, um, in terms of length of service, I mean, new, new department head is going to make less than, um, a department head that's been there for ten or fifteen years. So you'll, you'll see some differences there.
We've seen some female, uh, we have some female department heads that have been in it for like ten years. We can look at, uh, progressive pay raises and rates at the time that, um, their, their predecessors had, had been paid. There's a, there's a way to look at that and figure it. Because I, it's been my understanding that we've had male, um, department heads that have been retired for several years and we've got females replacing them and they're still making less money than those people that males that retired five, five years ago, just as an example.
Well, yeah, if you've got examples of that offline, maybe we certainly wouldn't want to do that publicly, but let us know, uh, which ones you're concerned about and we'll certainly take a look at them.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we, we can do that in executive session. It doesn't have to be public knowledge, but, you know, we would like to see that women are getting fairly paid. Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
On that subject is, uh, you, as, as city councillors here, uh, we have to be careful. You know, this is not our job, uh, dealing with, uh, the mayor's responsibility. He's the CEO of the city. And sometimes I worry, uh, and I know that, uh, Mayor Gradishar and Laura are bending over backwards to help us uh, get the information that we want. But this is not our realm. Uh, we, uh, could potentially put together, I guess, an ordinance, uh, you know, requesting that a, a salary, uh, study be done. But on specific things like this, uh, this really falls under the responsibility of the mayor. And, uh, but I, I think we get down this road a lot. And out of courtesy to the city council, we do get a lot of information that really we don't have oversight on. But I, I just want us to be careful on that. As an anecdote, I don't know if all of you know as councillors, uh, in the city charter in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, it actually says how much a city council person gets. And so from nineteen ninety-eight to today, it's still established eight hundred dollars. Okay? That eight hundred dollars today is worth four hundred dollars just due to inflation. Nothing that, you know, none of us are here because the money, obviously. But, you know, just an anecdote. Oh, I want to go back to the, uh, the internal auditor thing. Uh, and I, I just sent both the mayor and to Laura my concept paper that I presented. When I came up with the dashboard idea, I also had a concept paper about, uh, hiring an internal auditor. And I wanted to be clear because in a lot of ways, it's using the word auditor there is kind of a misnomer because an internal auditor is going to be much more than just looking at numbers. They're going to be reviewing contracts.
Sort of a compliance officer as well.
Yep. They, they're going to deal with compliance issues, performance standards, of fraud examinations, program improvements, risk management, uh, information system improvement, cost reduction measure. That job is really unimportant, uh, to me and my point of view is really important. And, uh, but anyway, I sent a copy to the two of just as a matter of information, uh, as if there's something there that, uh, that helps. I just wanted to send that to you for your files.
I think, I think it'll be useful as we start working on the job description. Yes.
Okay, good.
Um, I have a question, Mayor. Is, are, we're adding the, um, internal auditor to your one million one hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-three in this budget? Is this an add-on to this number?
No, it's included in that number, I think, if, if I understand your question correctly.
Okay. You, it is or it is? Okay, thank you. Counselor, oh, I'm sorry. Mayor, um, you've, you've been, you've had your office here for two, going on three years and, and your budget's almost doubled. Do you have a comment to the general public of maybe why that's happening? Why that's happened? Because that's the question that I'm sure citizens are going to be asking. Are you ready to, are you, do you have a an answer that we can give them?
Sure. Yeah, we're doing a lot more stuff than was done before. We're operating the public food project out of my office with employees in the office. And while we're talking about that, I guess I should give you a heads up that, uh, we're just looking at now a background paper and there's going to be another position created. Uh, it'll be operated out of mayor's office as well. And a lot of these positions have been or will be grant funded so that they're actually not costing the city money. Uh, but we've, um, been awarded a grant of four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, I think, for a just transition coordinator. And that position will be, uh, operating out of the mayor's office as well. We hope to start that process this year. And so, um, it will, um, you know, be in the mayor's office as well. But that's why the number of employees in the mayor's office have, uh, increased is because we're doing so much more than was done before. We've got a grant writer operating out of the mayor's office now that's, uh, I can't tell you how many millions and millions of dollars. Um, well, we can tell you and we probably have told you in the past. I just don't remember it off the top of my head in terms of the number of grants that have been received by the city since I've been mayor that have funded a lot of these positions. So it's, um, not really costing, uh, the, the taxpayers as much as you might expect because a lot of these are funded by grants. So, yeah, we're doing a lot more in the mayor's office and that's why it takes people to do a lot more. That's, that's why there's more employees in the mayor's office. Yes.
And at some point, it, it's my understanding that the Pueblo Food Project will be self-sustaining and be not associated with your office at, at some point. What, what, at what timeframe is that?
We just got another grant for four hundred and forty thousand dollars from the Colorado Health Foundation. It's a three-year grant and part of that grant is to organize the Public Food Project as a five oh one C three operation so that it can operate independently from the mayor's office. And you'll recall, this is a joint project of the city and the county. But the county has paid us money for the, uh, coordinator of the Public Food Project in years past uh, because of the important work that was being done. They recognized the importance of it. We decided to house it in the mayor's office simply because that's where we decided to do it, uh, at the time. But it was a joint effort and it is a joint effort of the, of the city and the county. But our anticipation is that in the next three years, it will transition out of the, uh, the mayor's office and will become a five oh one C three organization so that they'll be able to get grant, grants directly. And the grants don't have to come through the city of Pueblo. And they'll be able to continue the good work that they've done over the last three years.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Maestri, I might also add that the Director of Public Affairs, um, prior to the ma, mayor coming on board in two thousand and nineteen for the previous, um, five, eight years, had been assigned to the IT department that was, uh, whose major, uh, job duty and responsibility was to stand up the social media pages for the city. And with the mayor coming on board, moving it to the public affairs office, the director of public affairs back to the mayor's office where it was in the general manage offices, six, seven years prior to that. And that was another additional two, just it was moved within the city and not a new position.
Thank you. Counselor Tensio?
Yeah, I'm glad to see, uh, twenty-two new, uh, employees are going to be hired for two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, what is our allotted amount of employees that we have for city employees altogether? And how many do we have actually employed?
Ooh, I'm going to have to call on Marissa to do that. I mean, obviously, we have vacancies all the time because people uh, retire, quit, get terminated, and it takes a while to fill those positions through the civil service system. So, uh, Marissa would have to be the one that would give you an accurate number of the number of employees. There's not an allotted number of employees. I mean, um, city council approves obviously every position that's created in the city of Pueblo. Some of them are, are filled, some of them are unfilled, but we, we endeavor to, to get them filled and make sure we have an adequate staff to perform the services that have to be delivered to the citizens, the city. But Marissa, you want to tell them how many employees we have right now?
I would love to do that. So we have, um, approximately ninety-two vacancies funded right now, ninety-two vacancies, which sounds like a lot, but that's actually, we're doing better than we have. It's a, it's a constant, uh, process. Um, and I think we have a hu, eight hundred and fifteen, if my math is right, authorized right now. So that's what's in the, the budget. So ninety-eight fifteen minus ninety-two, quick math. Seven hundred and twenty-three, is that right? So, um, that's how many bodies are in seats right now. That's not including temporary employees. We probably have another three hundred temps filled that are still sort of, um, coming off the books as part of Parks and Rec big season that they always have their temps and seasonals, but.
Oh, my, my, my point is that, uh, those ninety-two employees provide services that our, our constituents aren't getting because we don't have them employed. So they're not doing the work of the city. We should have as many as we possibly can at all times.
I agree.
And I mean, I'm glad to see these twenty-two, but, you know, um,
Everybody agrees with that, Counselor. And one of the discussions we had today is we've got to move some money around in HR because we have exhausted our, um, every employee that comes to work for the city has to get a physical. And we've gone through so many this year that we've exhausted what we had budgeted for there. So you probably see, um, well, if we can't script it out of salary savings in HR, we might have to come back to the council and say we need to, uh, put some additional money in to the HR department for those new employee physicals because we've exhausted that fund at this point.
We have salary savings to cover it. So that's the good. The bad news is, is that that's the pattern. We do have salary savings because we have these vacancies that come up. Not just in HR, but all over the city. Um, you know, our recruitment staff working with, uh, civil service, I see Manuel behind me are working tireless, tirelessly to get these positions filled. Our, uh, turnover is up. I mean, we, we are seeing an uptick in turnover. And sometimes we're filling positions more than once a year. It's the same vacancy. So, um, you know, we're doing our very best, working as hard as we can with the resources we have, but, um, that's kind of where we are. And I know we're not alone. That's, we're not unique in that. A lot of employers are facing that. So we're working hard.
Thank you for the information. And then, Mary, you mentioned, uh, a grant for just transitions.
Yes.
Is that going to include just transitions for the employees that are going to be losing their jobs out at the, um, munitions disposal plant?
No.
There's a hundreds of people that are going to be.
Yep. This, uh, just transitions program is as a result of the state of Colorado moving away from, uh, carbon and moving away from coal. So Pueblo is a tier one community. I think there are four tier one communities. The other communities, one had a power plant, couple of them had coal mines. But as a result of state legislation, those, uh, coal mines and power plants are going to be shutting down earlier than anticipated. And so the Colorado Legislature set up a just transition program for these tier one communities of which Pueblo is one to help us transition. Now, Pueblo's in a better spot than some of these other communities because some of them already have their power plants shut down or their coal mines shut down. So we have until two thousand and thirty now is when the Public Utilities Commission has decided that the Comanche Three will, uh, shut down. So we've got between now and two thousand and thirty to transition our economy away from those coal jobs and into other jobs. Um, so part of the responsibility of this individual be to work on econ, economic development to, with Petco to replace the tax base there at Comanche. Comanche pays about twenty-seven million dollars a year in property taxes. So when that shuts down, now they've agreed to pay that until two thousand and forty under the PUC's ruling. So they'll keep Pueblo County and the city and the other taxing entities whole until two thousand and forty. But that's, this just transition process is basically related to coal and the fact that, uh, and the fact that uh these carbon um emitters are going to be phased out. Uh, with respect to the transition at the Chemical Depot, yeah, that's a different matter. Um, you know, I know Petco is working hard with those company, with companies, and to market those individuals, and they have efforts already trying to figure out which of those individuals want to stay in Pueblo. Um, and in terms of talking with press prospects, Pueblo is using those employees as a marketing tool because, you know, those are uh in a lot of cases, very highly educated individuals that um will be able to transition, we hope, into the other jobs in the community or start their own engineering firms, for instance, uh in the city and and do those kind of things. So efforts are being made to transition those employees, but that's not a part of this Just Transition Grant that we've received and that will be operating out of the mayor's office there. That's a long way to answer your question, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Um, Ms. Lono?
And um, Mayor and Anna, um, could you help me? In looking at the non-departmental budget, I have still three items that are circled that still need direction from the first conversation with respect, that need direction to staff. But the first conversation with respect to the differences between the mayor's recommendation on cer- on three other items and uh the Budget Committee's recommendation. And the first, um, I'll just go in order here, is um Petco. The mayor's recommendation of was three hundred thousand and the Budget Committee's three hundred and fifty thousand. And if we looked at what Anna has made changes to the budget already, um, that fifty thousand variance has not yet been, staff has not yet received council's consensus direction on what to do with that amount. So currently, three hundred thousand sits in uh the budget. But I, that's the first one, and then there are two others.
Laura, I believe that three fifty was added um to the Economic Development Tax. Um, if you look on H2, it actually shows four fifty, so it was the three fifty plus additional a hundred thousand that we normally budget for um professional services for that Economic Development Tax Fund.
That's good, then I'm going to do an X mark, I got that one covered. Um, and then the next one um is the uh Greater Chamber. Uh, the mayor had recommended nine hundred and fifty thousand, and the Budget Committee recommended eight hundred and fifty thousand. And Anna, have we taken care of that one thousand, hundred thousand dollar variance?
No, we still have the proposed his nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, my recollection was we had a discussion where to take a hundred thousand from the Greater Chamber and give it to the Latino Chamber, and I don't think we need to do that. I mean, I I'm happy to give the Latino Chamber the hundred thousand for to implement these programs that they talked about today, but I think we ought to leave the Pueblo Chamber at the nine fifty. As we discussed, that nine fifty includes fifty thousand dollars for the um Pueblo Shares uh project that uh the county has matched uh so that we can develop and publicize positive information about about the community. So my plan would be to leave it at the nine fifty. I'm hoping we get council's consensus for that.
Counselor Flores?
Uh, what was the ask from the chamber?
To one point seven or something?
Oh, yeah, they do that every year, but.
Well, they wanted all of the um hotel tax. So, you know, and obviously, I don't think that's reasonable. I think we gave you a breakdown previously that we're spending more than two million dollars a year on those tourism and hospitality industries, including the Chamber. So I I thought the nine hundred and fifty was was a good number for the Chamber.
And uh the amount that we gave them last year?
How much?
Eight hundred thousand.
Fifty, okay. Uh, what I, what I wanted to do, and I I think they're deserving of the nine fifty, uh, there's, there's other other information out there that I wanted to share, and that's that's information that we get uh when I attend the urban renewal meetings. And uh we get a full report from Spectrum, which is the uh, and uh there's a lady at the Chamber, uh, her name is Danielle, and uh she has really been doing some amazing work in getting more conventions into our convention center to the tune that on year-to-year, uh, the Public Convention Center has increased their revenue by about six hundred thousand dollars, date-to-date. Um, and the reason that she's been successful is that she has, she is a member now of the Colorado Tourist Council. She's uh, she's connected in with all of the individuals that have the authority to put conventions together. And so she's been, I think she's been uh, she's been uh very successful in doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I bring that up because uh that's one of the responsibilities the Chamber has. And uh, we we got a, we got a report at our last meeting a couple of weeks ago that uh that Spectrum is looking at a lot more work, and they've had some very, very uh interesting conventions there, uh, including uh the boxing, and then they had some other venues that they did there. But uh, I I just, I just wanted to justify that I think they're deserving of the nine fifty because they continue to uh to promote our city and increase our convention business.
So the, it sounds like then, Council, the question on the table is to keep it at nine fifty? Um, Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Um, you know, I would think that it would be only fair to see um what they would, how they would itemize that out, much like the Latino Chamber did. Um, and I know that they gave us a much bigger ask, the one point seven two million, but um I just still think that it's uh more than fair to ask what would be spending that extra hundred and fifty thousand. And then also, in the uh spirit of transparency, having a report out from the Latino Chamber, or not the Latino Chamber, the Greater Chamber of Commerce on where that potential nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar dollars is going every year.
Yeah, I think that that's probably in their request, their non-departmental request, is it not, Laura? I don't have that book in front of me.
Yeah, that was, that was for the full one point seven, but um more specifically for the extra hundred and fifty. I mean, if we had the Latino Chamber come and tell us what they would use the extra seventy-five thousand for, then why don't we have um if we're not going to fulfill the entire ask with uh everything budgeted in front of us, w- why don't we ask them what they would use the extra hundred and fifty for?
Sure, we can, we can have them come to a presentation if you like.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, Laura, can you get them on a work session between now and when this has to be approved?
Uh, yes, I can, thank you. They had agreed. Um, I think Counselor Maestra had requested a, a report on the Chili Free Hola Festival, and I think we had added that to the, to the upcoming um work sessions. I think it's November seventh. I'm going to see if they can come um actually next week um because November seventh's getting to be the week before uh the first reading, and as soon as we can, we can ask them to um to present is is probably better for just budget preparation in general.
Okay.
Counselor Flores?
Uh, the uh, th- this comment has nothing to do with this discussion right now, but we had the discussion, I don't know whether it was yesterday or last week, uh, about having um someone come before us and explaining how the distribution of the vendor fee and how that operates and uh how it's dispersed and what the logic is and separating it and all of that. Because I, I've kind of, I'm kind of confused about that.
Counselor Flores, I apologize. In preparation, I should have had that for this evening, and I, we do not. Okay. Thank you.
Did you have one other area, Laura?
The, the, the third area, um, which is um different um in the current budget and uh the, the council's Budget Committee is on the back page, and it is the Bessemer Historical Society. The mayor's recommendation in the ask is for forty-two thousand, and um the council's um Budget Committee recommendation is thirty-two thousand as they just, council just approved a ten thousand dollar um ARPA um presentation or award to them maybe a week, a couple of weeks ago. So that is a ten thousand dollar variance that we still need to reconcile.
Yeah.
Budget Committee, any thoughts?
Yeah, I thought that we were, that we all had agreed that the forty-four or the forty-two was um I thought that when we went over the budget or the non-departmental um asks that uh we all agreed on the forty-two as a final, even though we hit lower. That's sort of my assumption was.
Okay, we're fine with that.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor and Madam Chair, the last item that I believe Anna and I are still needing to reconcile, which really is um from the um Health Department and a hundred thousand dollar cleanups, and I don't know if uh Madam Chairman would is um comfortable to continue. Um, could, we did verify that from Anna that that they did spend near uh the majority of that hundred thousand this year. And so count, the Budget Committee had wanted additional information um to make certain that that you were all right with a hundred thousand. Budget Committee says yes if Council agrees.
When they, when they, when they came in here to uh give their presentation, they said that they had, you know, these are going to be rough numbers, but example, they had sixty cases. And they had fifty-eight of them. We were able to contact those people to come back and clean up their mess and disperse of it. That's what they said. So where's the hundred thousand? What's, is the hundred thousand in just the coordinating to get that done? That, that's, that's one of the.
No, I, 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 I think this hundred thousand is separate from that Trash Task Force operation that uh is in the Health Department now. This hundred thousand dollars is for community cleanups, so periodically they'll have Household Chemical Waste Day or Tire Days or or those kind of things. And I think they ha- try to do those once a quarter, and I think they send us a bill for them once a quarter uh for those kind of things. So that's separate from the Trash Task Force that's now being, excuse me, run and operated inside the Health Department.
Okay. That's great.
And it's different, it's different than the community cleanup days that uh, that we, we obviously had the last year or last spring and that we'll have a- again in November. It's different than that.
All right, I, because they came illegal dumping, that's what I was.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
This is something different than that, yes.
Uh, Budget Committee?
I, I think Anna clarified. She, she said that the city received invoices and it was tire waste. So I think we are good, I think that we were fine with it last time.
Yeah, good.
Uh, Mayor and Madam Chair, and Anna, could you confirm? I think we've got everything then set to go in the non-departmental. Oops, we do not. I apologize. We do. Is Anna, is, are all your boxes checked as well?
All of mine are checked unless you have something else, Laura.
And Mayor, I think I'm good if you are.
Yeah, I think we're good. We've uh, as I say, we've incorporated the changes that Council wanted to make in the non-departmental, and so I appreciate uh the consideration. We'll get the Chamber thing uh done, uh get that uh presentation to you so they can explain and outline how they plan to use the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in in 2023. But, and I'm sure they'll be able to do that uh in terms of the events that uh they've had in terms of the marketing that they plan to do for, for next year, so. That'll be the only open area, I guess.
Martinez Ortega, did you have anything to add?
Yes, it's a um departmental change um that I have a request for, and I understand how it fell through the cracks, uh, and I didn't bring it up again. But we had requested some flowers to be placed in the Bessemer on Northern um uh neighborhood, uh, those, those uh, the flower beds and um Chief of Staff Solano and I looked into it, and it was between three and five thousand. I think that's what Parks and Rec were saying, uh, as they were the, going to be um um facilitating those flowers. And so I would just like to see, um, I would like to see that uh added into their budget, the three to five thousand, probably just five thousand uh into the Parks and Rec budget so they can um put flowers in there annually so we can, if we're asking Bessemer and Northern to take pride in their area, let's uh definitely give them a leg up and help out with some flowers.
Who's going to take care of them?
Parks and Rec, same play, people that do everywhere else.
Well, I'm not, well, is Stephen there? Is Stephen present?
Yeah.
In the chambers? Okay, Stephen, you want to come down and talk about that a little bit and tell us is three to five thousand? That seems a little low to me to plant the flowers and to take care of them for a season. Um, you know, I know on the River Walk and stuff, I thought there was a volunteer group that took care of those baskets and those kind of things. Obviously, on Union, the um the concilius take care of that. I mean, I, I don't have any objection to beautify Bessemer. I'd like to see a local organization there, maybe partner with the city, where the city would plant the flowers and they would take care of them. If there are planters that are there, um and I, I've looked, and I, I know there's some well, somebody who's more familiar with it than me will have to say. And how many planters are there, Counselor, do you know?
I don't know at the top of my head, but they're between Pine and um Abriando. So about four blocks worth, uh, maybe two or three on each side. Um, so that would be about.
Two or three planters just on each side of the street, okay?
Yes.
Mayor, I, I could look into that. Um, I think uh I think there is about four or eight planters, eight total maybe, um, but I'd have to look into it, see what kind of irrigation's hooked up to it. Probably about five thousand dollars uh would be good to get the plants planted and maybe fix a little bit of the irrigation. And then um we could look and see how the street skate uh staff um how that can work into the program, you know, taking care of those landscape beds um along there.
Be- because we, we do the streetscapes, right? But do we maintain planters and stuff around town and other parts of town?
Yeah, we take care of some of those planters like uh um those new planting beds that are down along Santa Fe um and uh, what, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth Street? I think I'll have planters at those corners um down Fourth Street um between Midtown or the Justice Center and uh High Twenty-Five, there's uh planters along there. So, yeah, we take care of all those areas like that. The hanging baskets um that you see downtown, we uh help get those started in the spring, uh early spring, uh work with them. Um, a bunch of volunteers come in and help plant them, and uh we keep them there um in the garage, and we get them set out and help them set those out. Uh, but they hire somebody to water them. Um, so that's um, they're pretty self-maintained after, as long as somebody goes waters them. Uh, so, yeah, we, we do that kind of stuff.
Do you think the planters on Northern have irrigation too?
I don't know, I need to go check into them.
Okay, all right, how about, can you do that uh and get back to us in a week about whether or not this seems like a feasible project for next year? Or whether we need to maybe spend some more time planting it and maybe getting the community involved in some fashion? If, if there's not irrigation, I don't know um how that would work if we could get people in the Bessemer community that were interested in watering them if we got them planted.
I think originally, that's how they were set up was out without irrigation, irrigation and those businesses, you know, help water it and take care of it, but I'll double-check it.
The, the research that uh Chief, uh Chief of Staff Solano and I did was uh someone said from your department that they, that the irrigation was hooked up and it uh, it's ready to go. Um, and that's what I remember from our conversation earlier this year.
Okay, good.
We'll look into it.
Counselor Maestra Tensio?
Yeah, which leads me to the conversation we had last night about um um a million dollars goes to cleaning in Pueblo. I suggested that we do a million dollars to beautify Pueblo. I'd like to have that conversation. Uh, we could do Northern Avenue, we could do uh East Fourth Street. I have uh somebody from Pueblo Beautiful just today, by coincidence, told me that uh they would love to have Troy Avenue from Highway Fifty to Forty-seven. The median there should be uh planted and taken care of. The um, the uh um intersection of Forty-seven and Troy, we started uh landscaping that last year, year before and started and left it, and now it's beautiful. The part that we did is
Right.
great, but.
We put it up to bid and nobody bid on it. Uh, we opened up bids, well, we asked for bids.
My point is that. My point is that we should dedicate a large, a million dollars a year, literally, towards beautification of the city. Pueblo Beautiful would be a great conduit to do that. They could do all areas of the city. They do already. They have the volunteers. They have the manpower, basically. So I think we ought to do it and take care of that issue and take care of issues all over the city. What we need to do, and, and one of the things that I get from people all the time is that they don't like the look of the city. Well, then let's do something about it. We're spending, how big is the budget now? Hundred hundred and thirty-three million?
Three million, yeah.
Yeah, and, and not a cent is going towards beautification. Let's do something, people, come on.
Well, it's not true that not a cent is, you know, the Parks Department obviously is maintaining a lot of those landscapes there, but I, I hear what you're saying. I'm wondering if perhaps we could sit down with Pueblo Beautiful, counselor, and maybe come up with a plan. I, I, I don't want to put a million dollars in the budget without a plan in place that would say this is where we're, this is the area we need, these are the areas we need to do, or this is what we can do. I think we ought to think about it and make sure it's well thought out, but I, I don't have any objection to doing that. And I'd commit to spending the next year working on that with the idea that in the 24 budget, we put some money in there to implement the plan, once the plan is developed.
We did, we, those through the streetscape committee, we started doing those streetscapes, like the medians, you talk about Troy. That was one of them that was slated, that was always wished it could be done, and it just never get, the funding never came up.
Yeah, the thing is, is that I, I understand, but our, our efforts, and you, I mean, I applaud you for your efforts, but we need to really expand it a lot. Yes, and we do need the money. And, and we do have, it's not like we don't have money. So
Well, what we don't have is a plan right now.
Well, we beautiful and committee and, and see what we can do about coming.
I could work with them.
Maybe we could allocate during the year monies towards 23 and then look into a, a bigger budget for 24. That'd be fine.
Yeah, I think if a plan could be put together between now and spring that made some sense, we could probably certainly come back to council and say, hey, we've got this plan now. We want to do this. I'm certainly willing to do that.
Right. I'll, I'll work with Stephen on that.
Okay. I think Stephen and the streetscape committee and Pueblo Beautiful, you know, to get all those people together and let's see what people think is the best way to go.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Isn't there a business in town watering certain planters?
Is that who does it? So, so, because there's a lot of pots and
It's the biggest expense on those flower pots is watering them. And we, we work with Downtown Association and the people of Beautiful, and they all come together and we pay the bills.
Yeah, one of the things that the Pueblo Food Project has done is these edible landscapes, you know, on Central Plaza in Sister Cities Park across from City Hall, you know, those planters and stuff like that, the last couple of summers have been, they've been putting edible landscapes in there. And I, I think as we sit and talk with Pueblo Beautiful and the Streetscapes Committee, that we ought to explore other, other ways that we could maybe expand that a little bit, so.
Let's do.
Okay, that's a good turn. Is there anything else? Seeing none, then I conclude this work session at 7:04.
Thank you, everybody.